To call the January twenty fifth meeting to order at seven oh two, if we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington.
One nation.
Indivisible, everlasting.
Apparently a Cylon was also.
Okay, um, let's move on to acknowledgements. Do I don't believe we have any for tonight, correct? Dr. Will.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. No acknowledgements tonight.
Okay. We're also aren't changing anything for the agenda. Um, so I will entertain a motion to approve the January fifth and the January eleventh minutes. We'll just do them together.
Uh, Jake Amari moved to approve the January fifth and January eleventh minutes.
Tony Hope, second.
Okay, is there any discussion? If there is, please raise your hand at this time. And if not, I will um do a roll call vote from the little boxes that I have on my screen. Okay, seeing no hands, I will start off at the top. I have Jacob on the corner.
Aye.
Galia.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
Jaden.
Aye.
Claude.
Aye.
Sophia.
Aye.
Griffin.
Aye.
Um, I don't have Dana. Dana, are you?
Aye.
Okay, there you are. And I'm I as well, therefore they will be as is. And it passes unanimously. Okay. Let's move on to the public participation. We have the two minute time. If you could at this time, please raise your hand. And when called, please list your name and your address for the record for Lisa, and you'll be given two minutes. So let's go to Rini.
Rini B. Saw, uh, two thirty Grand Hill Road. I want to thank the Board of Ed for putting all the budget questions online where we can all see them. Thank you so much. There's lots of great questions and I appreciate that. Second, I would like to ask that you post the salary roll, which is a large part of the budget, up with the budget so that those who want to see them can do so. It's a foiable document, so therefore it should be public. And I, since you support the commitment to being transparent, I think that that should be part of what is available to the public without having to submit a FOIA request. I did get that last year as a FOIA request, but I think it shouldn't be that. Um, just make it easy for everyone. It's transparent. And thank you for all you do.
Good. Thank you, Rini. Um, let's go to Heather.
Hi, good evening. Heather McKeon, sixty-two Cross and Drive. Recently, under the guidance of the Connecticut Parent Advocacy Center, I along with support from People Services Director Patty Hess and uh Superintendent Walter Roulette, we have begun a special education advisory council in our TPS community. This is a parent-led council of IEP parents and caregivers working collaboratively with admin and ultimately um special education educators and other special education providers. As mentioned, we will work collaboratively and report back to decision makers like yourselves on TPS special education, real-world experiences, systemic issues, needs, and also recommendations we've identified during our council meetings. We ask that you take the information we provide you into consideration as you make decisions on our children's behalf. We've already had some constructive conversations and have identified some real opportunities. Tonight, I want to briefly share some positive sentiment with you. Families have shared substantial growth in their child's speech due to interventions. A note noted improvement in confidence, grades, independence within these students at all grade levels is attributed to services. Um, and this has been expressed by families. Admin has shared that math achievement GAF is closing, and they attribute this to co-teaching efforts. Families are excited about the Saturday school funded by a grant award for those who receive services. This will be a topic of discussion within the SEAC group about success of the program. Parents have shared positive feedback about Lunch Bunch intervention as this has provided valuable social emotional learning and peer connection opportunities within a small group setting. Parents have seen a valuable uptick in school-to-home communication. And families have noticed emotional and behavioral improvements in children who feel a strong connection with specific general ed teachers. It has been suggested that.
I'm sorry, Ms. McCann, the two minutes for apologies.
No, that's fine. This is just a taste. Thank you for your time and I look forward to sharing more with you.
Thank you. Um, I didn't hear a timer. I was writing my notes.
Yeah, I don't know what. I don't know why it's not um. In order to get the audio, I might have to turn, you know, the sharing off for a minute. Do you want me to do that?
No, 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 it's fine. Paying attention. I was just doing my notes. Okay. Um, thank you very much. At this time, if there's anyone else in the public that would like to speak, please raise your hand. And if not, I will close that off. Okay, at this time, um, I will close off the public participation and we will go on to correspondence. Jacob?
All right. So we had an email from a resident asking about ways to get more involved in the district. And we had an email expressing concern about teacher vacancies and the reliance on long-term substitutes at the middle school. And that was all for correspondence for the period.
Okay, um, perfect. At this point, I will open it up to um points of information for any board members. So at this time, if you'd like to um have anything to say or Dr. Will, if you do, uh, please just raise your hand and I will call on you. Griffin.
Thank you. Um, well, first off, um, Mrs. McCann, thank you so much for that update. I wasn't aware of that. So I don't know, Ashley, if there's a way to maybe give Heather a little bit more time going forward so we could really see or hear, I should say, about um this new parent advisory group. I think that would be um a really.
Is there an actual name on there? I didn't catch if there was an actual name for it, Dr. Will.
Oh, yeah, it's called the SEAC and it's um, it's in um, it's been in the, well, the, the information's been in the newsletter for a while. Um, with respect to the meetings that are coming, and there's a video about it. It's shared weekly. So uh, on the superintendent's newsletter, if you, anyone wants to jump on there, the SEAC um committee, um, Social Education Advisory Committee is, it's got a resource there for people to look at.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. So I'm.
I was just writing down what it was actually called.
Um, so my other kind of question slash concern is, um, I don't know if any of you had watched the town council meeting last night. There was a lot of discussion regarding the audit. So I just wanted to talk about that a little bit. Um, I am concerned. I, I, I did look at the management letter. And I know it was posted on the dashboard a few weeks ago. I actually missed the actual letter, so I'm, I'm looking at it now, but um, the town council had some definite concerns about um the issues. And when I look at the management letter, they use the word numerous several times. So that is definitely concerning to me. And I feel like as Board of Ed Chair, I want to bring the, I'm sorry, sorry, Ashley, as FFC Chair, I should bring this to our attention. I think that this should definitely be something that we put on the next Board of Ed agenda. Um, it sounded like the council and, you know, Brian Foley actually said he was very concerned about this when he saw this management letter um regarding the audit. And I just think it's something that the Board of Ed should be talking about. It was, you know, I'll be honest, and I'll take some responsibility for this. It was a little embarrassing listening to the council talk about some stuff last night that we have not talked about as a board. And, you know, they brought up internal controls, policies, and um, we could talk about this later during the budget, but they brought up the fact that we um, in the superintendent's proposed budget, we're actually cutting one of the accounting positions. So I think that's something that this board should be talking about as well as the changes made to the accounting department. So again, I just wanted to bring this up during points of information to basically formally request that we put this on the next agenda because I think it's important that we discuss it as, as a, as a board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Griffin. Um, let's go to Tony.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I've got two points. One, uh, I wanted to again thank Dr. Willet and the administration and staff for the, the latest edition of instructional rounds. Uh, we did it at Birch Grove and focused on foundations in the, make sure I get it right, the science of reading. Uh, we were able to see kindergarten teacher, first grade teacher and second grade teacher. And I mean, to say I was floored would be putting it mildly that those, those teachers are absolutely amazing at how they perform, what they do in there. And you know, probably a little bit biased with the, a little one of my own, but the, the steps that they were taking and just the, the way they ran that classroom. Wonderful and glorious to see. So, but thank you all for the time and the opportunities. I look forward to the next one. Uh, my second point, and Dr. Will or Ms. McCann, if it's already out there, can you let me know? I'm, I'm intrigued with the, the SEAC. And wondering if there's a POC or uh, if you could get us an email or somebody that could ask, shoot us some thoughts or questions to. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Um, Galia.
I just also, like Tony, um, wanted to thank um the staff and teachers for the runs that we did at Birch Grove on Friday. Um, Foundations is a great program, and um, it was something that started when um my younger son was in elementary school. It was great to see how much it's grown. It was great to see um, the progression, starting in kindergarten, then first and second, um, on how the kids built upon their skills. Um, the teachers were so great and interactive with them. And um, it was just, it was a great program. It was a great day. So um, I wanted to note that as well. And then regarding the audit questions, I just wanted to confirm that this was what Dr. Willet provided us on the dashboard on twelve twenty-three twenty-two. I just pulled it up. So I thought that we had some suggestions, recommendations, and that they were being put into effect. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Will, do you want to speak about the um audit information?
Sure. I mean, maybe we should provide this document to the town council. Um, you know, this is what was sent to the board on the twenty-third. In addition, uh, as you are aware, on the twenty-third, all audit documents were shared with the board. All were published on the dashboard and, and all board members were encouraged to review them. Uh, no, you know, as you can see, accounting practices, um, we were good, accounting estimates, we were good, financial statement disclosures, we were fine. Significant unusual transactions. There weren't any difficulties encountered during performing the audit, uh, no significant um, you know, uncorrected misstatements, you know, each of these areas that were highlighted in this audit, um, you know, it shows there was really no material weaknesses or issues. At the end of an audit, there are sometimes recommendations. In addition to this, each recommendation that was made, uh, the information was provided to the board as to what the situation was with respect to that recommendation. Um, so on the twenty-third, the board in its entirety was provided all of this information. Um, and I would be very happy to provide this to the town council if so desired, and of course, enter into any uh meeting um that you wish to do to discuss it. So yes, Ms. Galia Chan, this information was provided, um, you know, during the meeting. So I'm happy to do that in greater detail.
Okay. Uh, Griffin, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of expand a little bit on that. I think the the issue that the town council might have been having that I'm kind of looking at now, and while I appreciate, you know, everything that you said, um, Dr. Will, on that document, the auditor specifically said that we have numerous Board of Ed managed funds not being accurately updated and numerous Board of Ed purchases being made before a purchase order was issued. So that's the only thing of why, while I can appreciate the narrative that was given on December twenty-third, I, I just feel like we might need further clarification directly from the auditor. And I'm not sure if that's anything that's ever been done before. I know the auditor was at the town council meeting last night, but maybe it would be a good idea to have the auditor come to a Board of Ed meeting to talk about, like, why would, why are they putting numerous, the word numerous in their management letter?
I, I would welcome that conversation as to why the word numerous was used. I would, I would welcome that conversation.
Okay. Yeah, I think it would be a great idea. I think.
So do I. I think it would be a great idea.
So that, so that's kind of what I was looking at, not so much. And again, I apologize. I completely missed the management letter um on that Board of Ed dashboard post. So that was, I will take responsibility for that. So that's why I'm just kind of bringing it to the board's attention now.
No, no, no. I think it's a great idea. I would welcome. I have that question myself, frankly.
Yeah, okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Um, thank you. Um, anyone else at this time? Any other board members? Um, Dana.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Um, I just wanted to thank Heather McCann for bringing up the, the, this special education advisory council information. And I would um, you know, copy what Tony said, if you have a, a point of contact um for, for your team. And Ashley, if we could put something on our board agenda so that she doesn't, she isn't limited to that two-minute, because I definitely think that it's a great opportunity for us to um be involved in that entire process and, and support that. So uh, your point of contact would be fantastic as well as I hope we can add it to one of our future agenda items.
I don't know, um, Dr. Will, if this was following or the committee liaison report section, um, you know, because that's something to think about in terms of, you know, having updates for it. Um, obviously, they're going to meet and do that, you know, something to toss around, have the idea. Um, the one thing too that I would like to say once again is, you know, thank you for all the admin and teachers that came, came out to answer budgetary questions for us. I think that they did a really fantastic job. I know I stayed well past our end of the meeting, and I still didn't end up going to every single room that was available. Um, so I definitely appreciate everyone taking their time and coming out and asking questions and having the answers. So I think that was very productive, but we can talk about that during uh budget concerns. Okay, um, let's jump on to the student representative reports. If you ladies want to hop on.
Hello. So, not a very exciting week. Um, obviously, we had finals. Finals went pretty well. Really loving the mid-semester break. It's going very well for me. I've done absolutely nothing. Um, but yeah, finals were rough, but we all got through them and everything's good now.
I know. This, this day's been fantastic. I wish every day was like this, but of course it can't be. Um, tomorrow, starting the new semester, we are starting off by going to advisory so that um everyone, all students can know their schedules if they're unaware. And I think that'll be good for like freshmen's.
Mm-hmm. Um, I'm sure everyone knows this, but on half-days now, we will have lunches. Uh, this is like a brand-new thing. Uh, the middle school is doing it too, per my sister. And I am very excited to eat lunches at nine AM.
Right. Um, uh, the sophomore class officers and the freshman class officers are hosting a snowball, which I think it's on like February eighth, if I'm a hundred percent sure. But um, so like publicity and stuff is getting out about that. And I've heard some great things about it, so I'm excited.
Mm-hmm. I think we've mentioned it before, a few meetings back, but it's coming up very, very close. The Quebec trip. Everyone going on is very excited. We have a meeting tomorrow with both parents and students, so we're going to learn a little more about that. It is the ninth through the twelfth, if I'm not wrong, which I don't think I am. And uh, it's very exciting.
And then finally, um, on the morning announcements, um, it's been advertised that seniors should um let everyone know their college acceptances and deferrals. So there's a board outside the council office where you can like write your name on the college you got accepted into, as well as I think there's a couple of boards in the uh council's office, which I think is pretty cool because it's just giving people like recognition for their accomplishments. And it's nice to see where the seniors have gotten into.
And if anyone has any questions or comments, now is the time to present them.
Bring sports are open too.
Bring sports are open. Yes.
Because I know I still need to sign up and get the health forms in. So I just know that as a parent, that's what I have to do.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Griffin.
I was just curious if you guys know, um, why are they having lunch on half-days all of a sudden? Maybe this is a better question for Dr. Will, and will they be serving more breakfast-type foods?
Yep.
I can answer that. We, we are required to by the state.
Oh, is that a new, a new state mandate?
We have been newly informed.
Okay.
And the lunches, just so you know, Griffin, was egg sandwich or uh egg on a pizza, for the minimum, at least. The high school starts in February. They don't start quite yet.
Do they get a whole ha- a half hour again on a half-day?
They, uh, well, scheduled days, they do lunch and um non-scheduled days that are surprise, you know, surprise half-days, they do breakfast, I think. And I think it is twenty or more minutes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Well, enjoy your egg sandwich, girls, on the dates that you get those.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies, for your updates. Um, and like I said, I know that you guys have today off, so enjoy the rest of the day.
All right, have a good night.
You too. Okay, um, let's just jump into the um Titan General.
Yes, uh, I believe we have Adam, Mr. Teff from Titan Gen to give a presentation. Adam, are you, can you hear me?
Yep, I can.
Great. So what I'm going to do is um, I'm going to, uh, do you want me to put the presentation up or did you want to share it yourself?
I can share it. I can share it on my side.
Okay, hold on one sec. We're, our screen's going to get a little messy for a second. All right, uh, see if.
Let's see.
See if you can grab that.
Not yet.
All right, how about, can you just say beep and I'm going to move it forward? That might be better. Because I just, I can't seem to share it to you without opening it up to multiple sharing people, and that could be problematic.
Sure.
So um, I'm going to share the screen here, and then if you just, you know, beep forward.
Give you a sign.
Okay, so let me do that here. There you go. And Titan Gen.
It was actually, it was the version two, I think. So, yeah, so that one right there.
Right there. Got it.
Yep. Do you want me to kick it off or do you want to maximize the screen? I mean, either, either one's fine with me.
You can, uh, here, I'll, uh, how's that? Let me blow that, uh, how's that?
Yeah, good. Okay. Um, and you can, let's see, skip one. Um, some of this, yeah, so I'll just touch on this really, really quickly. Some of this may be um repetitive here, but um really nice to see everybody again and talk to everybody. Um, I'm Adam Teff, General Manager of Titan Gen, responsible for all of our renewable energy um projects that we do with our um partnership with CCM, so the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. Um, Titan's been in business for about twenty years. We're located in Hartford. We offer a variety of energy management services. As I said, I manage our renewable energy side of the business. Um, and uh, you know, we do a lot of work with the, with CCM and um member towns and boards of education here in the state. There you go. Flip. Okay, so um, again, some of this may sound familiar to the last time we talked, but I want to give everybody's kind of a general overview of, you know, what the thinking was here, what the process was that we followed, um, and how the results would integrate into any future um uh, future state that, you know, would, would exist if you move forward with these projects. So um first and foremost, uh, you know, we put out an RFP for the projects at the schools. Effectively, every school um has a solar opportunity associated with it. We hosted a site walk with various bidders that came by. Uh, we had four companies show up to the RFP walkthrough. Everybody had a chance to see the facilities, ask questions. Pete Zaba was, was there with me uh to make sure that we had a kind of um, you know, full access to, to the folks who know the buildings better than anybody. We had a, you know, a question and answer session that lasted a few weeks, just as, as vendors had questions um about what they saw during the walkthrough. We shared utility bill data, gave everybody access to everything they needed in order to put together other proposals for the schools. So when the results came in, um, we went through, analyzed them, tried to level set everybody's bids so that we could compare them on a truly apples-to-apples basis. Uh, we did give some suggestions as to what kinds of projects we thought made the most sense, but we did also leave some room for vendors to suggest ideas maybe that we hadn't thought of. So the results that came back, you know, they were very, very strong. They're actually um better than I had forecast, which is always a good thing. But one, one thing I want to point out is there's two types of projects here. There's behind the meter and then there's front of the meter. Um, so I just want to familiarize you real, you know, real quickly with what that means. Behind the meter means the energy that gets produced is utilized on-site, so at the facility that the, the solar array is located on. The financial benefit in that case is you are producing your purchases from ever-source, which is a relatively more expensive kilowatt-hour. In exchange, you're allowing the solar company to build, own and operate the array on your property and sell power directly to you. So the solar company is really acting like utility on your property. And your savings comes in the form of replacing an expensive kilowatt-hour with a less expensive kilowatt-hour. Um, so that's kind of one basic premise, um, uh, of how these projects can be installed and, and how you would realize the benefits from that. So I'll talk about the three projects that are behind the meter on this slide. And then on the next slide, when we get to that, um, you'll see that there's a front-of-the-meter option. Front-of-the-meter is simply the array is producing energy that goes back out to the power grid. So ever-source is the recipient of that energy. In exchange for allowing a solar company to do that, they pay uh a lease fee. So that's a revenue, that's revenue coming in the door for the school district. So behind the meter is utility bill savings, so you're lowering your costs. Front-of-meter is revenue coming in from the solar company. And there are reasons why we split this, these projects up into behind-the-meter and front-of-meter. Um, the short explanation for why that is, is that you have a lot of, a lot of real estate here, a lot of roof space, space on the ground. We have a lot of different options of how we, you know, use your physical space and um maximize the, the benefits that we get from the utility incentive program. So all of this being said, it's in service to maximizing the financial benefit that tall and public schools can get from these projects. So with that all being said, middle school, intermediate school and the high school, those are behind-the-meter projects, and I'll run you through um what the uh, the, the system layouts are so you can get a sense of what that is. But just for the moment, I want to focus on the um, the, the financial aspects of it. So out of those three projects, um, the middle school, intermediate school and, and high school, Green Skies Renewable Energy had the best portfolio um options for the school. So the, the financial benefits, again, coming in the form of reducing our ever-source costs in favor of the power purchase agreement, which is the school buying power at the set price. So if you look at these, these tabs here, what I wanted to do is just kind of go through and organize everything in a standard way, um, run some calculations, and then I'll, I'll wrap all this up on the next slide with, with a summary. But um, if you go through left to right, you see the company that responded, so the bidder, the system size that they propose, annual kilowatt-hour production associated with each system, your ever-source cost per kilowatt-hour, so the value of that, what you're offsetting. The solar cost per kilowatt-hour, that is the price of, of the energy that you would be purchasing directly from the vendor. So that's the, those are the electrons that are being generated by the solar. And then you have your annual savings, which is just a difference between your ever-source cost and your solar cost multiplied by the annual kilowatt-hour production from the array. Pretty simple math behind it. So that's the annual savings, year one. I also ran a lifetime savings analysis for um, you know, the, the twenty-year duration of the project, taking into account the fact that you lose about half a percent every year from the solar array just by degradation. Um, you know, the, the equipment degrading slowly over time. And also, I assume a utility escalator of one point five percent. So on average, over the course of a year, you know, you're. So on average, over the course of a year, you know, your, your price can swing based on if you have a supply contract that expires, et cetera. But there's still always a number of components in your price that tend to increase over time. Those are the, the kind of traditional pulls and wires charges from ever source. Those never come down. Um, so you know, there's different ways that you could try to extrapolate out lifetime savings. Some folks take the escalator up to two percent or three percent. I think that's aggressive. One thing you could do, if, you know, if you didn't want to assume any escalation factor over time. You know, you could just assume that pricing stays flat on average over twenty years. Um, you could certainly do that as well. That's really kind of more the annual savings, um, you know, multiplied out by twenty, but also taking into account some degradation from the arrays. But the thing I, I do want to stress is that the solar price per kilowatt hour, that stays fixed for a period of twenty years. So that will not escalate. So just, you know, giving you a little um context for how the math works on these deals. The middle school behind the meter, you'll note that on the next slide, there's also a front of the meter option for the middle school. And the reason, and I'll explain kind of the reasoning behind that um when we move to the next slide. Or maybe I'll, I'll touch on it now. So the middle school has two electric meters and based on the program rules and what we're allowed to do. Um, we could put a system on the ground and with a parking canopy and also build something on the roof. So that's why you'll see that there are two projects being proposed for the middle school. Um, the intermediate school, all the same kind of principles apply here. That's a rooftop project. And then the high school project is a combination of carports and a ground mount system. Um, one of the things I will point out quickly, just in case, you know, you're um, you know, kind of scrutinizing some of these numbers and. Uh, the high school behind the meter, if you look at that box, the ever source cost per kilowatt hour is actually lower. At this school than the others, and that's really for, for two reasons. I guess it's probably, maybe they fold up into one, one main reason. Um, it's a different rate class. So different rate classes with ever source um have different pricing structures. So the high school is actually uh, it's, it's labeled as an industrial property, just because it's so large. So your average cost per kilowatt hour is significantly lower at that school than the other two, which are small commercial meters. So I just wanted to call that out specifically um in case that was a question that, that came up. Again, all, you know, otherwise, all of these, you know, same principles apply here in terms of what the savings would be from these systems. Dr. Willett, you can move to the next slide. Okay, so Birch Grove and the middle school, these are the two front of the meter projects. The reasoning for Birch Grove being front of the meter instead of behind the meter is that. The school is, is so big, but so efficient. That if you were to build a rooftop system that only covers the energy consumption at that location. Your system would be significantly smaller. Um, and you wouldn't derive as much benefit from it. And the reasoning is because the utility allows us for locations like this that have large rooftops, but. Their energy consumption is relatively small. We're allowed to build out the entirety of the roof. So use every, every um available spot on the roof, you know, setbacks and, and, and safety. Regulations all, you know, taken into account, but um, we're allowed to, to use the entirety of that roof if it's a front of the meter project. So the energy going back to the grid. So in cases like this, where we have a large roof. Minimal energy consumption relative to the size of the roof, the way you maximize your financial benefit is to do a front of the meter project. And again, this is a situation where you'd get a fixed annual payment for twenty years. So that's, you know, it, it's a little bit of a different deal structure, but it's, you know, money coming in the door fixed for twenty years. Middle school, the reason that we, we did a, a, a front of the meter here is that you, you have two electric meters, one with a lot of consumption. That was the system that we um, that we, we use that meter for the behind the meter option. And then you have a second meter here, which has uh very, very little consumption. I think it probably has some exterior. Um, exterior lighting on it and, and things like that, or, or, you know, there, or, or I believe actually it's like a section of the building. It's like. It represents like twenty percent of the total energy consumption at the, at the whole property. But you have a very large rooftop. Um, so again, here, being able to maximize that roof space. In doing it under a front of the meter option um is, is how you get the most financial benefit from that project. So between those two projects and the three behind the meter projects. I just wanted to do, you know, a snapshot of the total savings and revenue from all of those. Um, so that's the bottom box there. It's really just a summary of the information presented on the, the previous slide. And then this, this slide as well. So if you add all of that up between the utility bill savings and the revenue coming in. It's just almost two hundred thousand dollars a year. And then again, if you extrapolate that out over the terms of these agreements of twenty years, it's about five point five million. I'll stop there and then, you know, the, kind of the, the next phase of this um conversation, we can look at layouts and things, but. Um, I think this is probably as good a place as any to take a pause. If folks have any questions.
Oh, go ahead, Griffin.
Thank you, thank you, Adam, for um putting this together. Dr. Willett, can you go back up a slide? I have just a couple of questions. So um, the solar kilowatt hour numbers. You said that those were, those numbers are fixed for twenty years?
The, so the price per kilowatt hour that you pay to the vendor, that is fixed for twenty years.
Okay, so what happens, or why wouldn't we, I guess is my question. Why would we not go shop around ever source to get a better rate? Or let's say in five years, ever source is back down to eight cents, which is what they were a couple of years ago. What's the advantage to locking in at fourteen when we can, we can shop ever source?
Yeah, so I, I can address that head on. So right now, you guys actually are in a supply contract. So really, your, your ever source costs are a combination, not just your supply, that, that's a piece of it. But then you have basically the whole other half of your bill, which are the ever source regulated charges. So those are the charges that account for transmission, distribution, et cetera. Those, you, you can't shop those. Those are fixed ever source costs that just by virtue of being an ever source customer, you have to pay. Um, so Pete has actually done uh, uh, well, not actually, he's, he's done a tremendously good job of. Uh, working with the other side of Titan's business, um, the CCM Energy Purchasing Program. Um, and you guys have an exceptionally low contract rate now. That's good through, I think, another eighteen months or so. And Pete, you can, you know, jump in and correct me if, if my dates aren't right. But you, you do have that ability and you've taken a good advantage of it. And, you know, the reality is you guys locked in at, at probably the bottom of the market right now. But, you know, sometime within the next eighteen months, you're gonna have to revisit that supply agreement. And right now, that supply price, I believe, is either in the six cent range or the seven cent range. So you're doing incredibly well. But, you know, that's a variable that will have to be addressed at some point and the, the very, very high likelihood. Based on what's happened with the energy market over the last year and a half. You know, your pricing on the utility side is likely gonna go up. So, you know, being able to lock in at, at a low price is, you know, certainly. Um, a, a good thing kind of now, but I think it's gonna serve you well over time when you have to go back out into the market. And, and rebuy your energy supply um at some point over the next eighteen months.
I think that's, that's the right.
Basically committing though to fourteen cents or ten or eleven for twenty years. When we don't know what the market actually will do. So I guess that's kind of the problem I'm having. It's ten years from now. Or, you know, natural gas could, could plummet again, you know, down to much lower numbers. I just have a hard time locking in for such a long period of time. When we just don't know what's gonna happen in the natural gas and oil market five, ten, fifteen years from now. So that's just, you know, what's, what's making me pause with, with this.
Yeah, so, you know, a, a, a few things too. Um, so when you guys locked in your electric rate now. And, you know, this is sort of like energy commodity one oh one stuff, um, that, you know, we'd normally be talking about on. An energy commodity type focused conversation, but there's, there's certainly um a thread of that that, that runs through all this. And then there, there's something else that I want to mention too, which I, I think is gonna be pretty important for everybody. So when the current electric contract was booked, natural gas was trading at about two dollars, two dollars and fifty cents. A decotherm, um, which was, that was like the, the, you know, COVID had just hit. Natural gas prices were, you know, hit the floor. Um, oil commodities were actually trading in the negative for a while. It was a unique time. Um, and, you know, the historic average per decotherm in natural gas is about four fifty, five dollars. So it was as low as it really had ever been. Um, when you guys put your current supply contract in place. So I think as, as we're trying to judge baselines, and the reason I bring up natural gas is because in New England, natural gas and electricity. Basically track each other, because so much of the energy production that finds its way into this market is. A result of natural gas-fired power plants. So as we're talking about, like, you know, using a baseline here. I, I think we have a pretty, a pretty low baseline that we're starting with. And, you know, how you view what could happen over the next, you know, ten, twenty years. You know, as we look out over the next five at least, I think like, you know, trying to make predictions twenty years hence is, is really challenging, you know. I don't think anybody would argue that. But there are just some really, really powerful dynamics in play with the energy markets today. That I think are gonna keep prices pretty elevated for a while. You know, they're, they're, they're coming back down thankfully after peaking in October. Um, but the only reason that they've come back down again is because we've had an exceptionally warm winter, which is, you know, pretty young. It's kind of an unpredictable um dynamic to, to try to rely on. The other thing that I just want to mention too about the behind the meter projects for the middle school and the intermediate school. Is a quirk of what's happened with the Connecticut incentives for these rate classes. And these types of projects. So um, the simple kind of streamlined explanation of what's happened with the incentives. Is that with the new program, they were designed as such where for certain rate classes like, like these. They're really sensitive to what the energy price at the market or what the ever source was offering for an energy price. Because the values are basically move in the opposite direction. So like the solar incentive values. And the wholesale cost of energy move in different directions. So when the price of energy is elevated. By the way, the virtue of the way the program was designed, certain kinds of rate classes were more affected by that than others. And for the middle school and the intermediate school, the incentive value for these two projects actually fell all the way to zero. So the prices here are without any incentives whatsoever. So, and I, I mentioned this in a future slide, it was kind of something that, you know, I was gonna weave into the conversation. You know, with, without taking three hours of everybody's time to try to do it, but it, I, I do talk about this in, in one of the future slides. So if you guys are at home reading this, you know, um, you can go back and reference what I'm talking about. But my advice to the school district would be the likelihood that the incentive values are going to improve. Um, in a year from now, once energy prices moderate a bit, um, and that incentive value starts to go back up. That I would contract with the developer so that when and if the incentives. Return back to kind of normal levels, that they would pass that value back through to the town on a one for one basis. So for these two projects, what you're seeing here is with no incentive whatsoever. So even if in twenty twenty four, when they reset the values, because they reset the values every year. Even if you get an extra, you know, three or four cents per kilowatt hour and that's passed through, your savings are gonna be even greater. So this is like, when I think about like how to present these projects and, and what, you know, best case, worst, worst case scenario. Presentation like, I think this, this is absolutely like the worst case scenario where there's no incentives at all. And your price of ever source energy is as low as it's ever been. So if any of those dynamics improve for these two projects, because these, the middle school and intermediate behind the meter were, were the ones that got affected by this. The other ones didn't. Um, you would see your annual savings go up pretty significantly. So the reason that I suggested at least, you know, looking at these fro, these two projects from a worst case scenario. And um, you know, moving forward with those with, under, under the, the assumption that. When, you know, if the incentive values improve and we can apply for those, uh, that that value would be passed through and fall back to the, the school districts. Is that it would at least allow Greenskies to lock in their project costs, like the, the equipment costs. So that, you know, we don't have any more inflation on the cost of the equipment. Because these projects, as far as I know, the intent was to try to build them for summer twenty twenty four. Which is really, you know, trying to tailor it to the school calendar. But, you know, without getting too much into the weeds and, and, and turning, you know, the, the conversation. You know, kind of on its head, I think those are just some points I want to make about ever sources pricing. Um, the solar pricing and, and, and what options that we have actually to drive this down even lower.
Okay, no, I think they can continue on and I think there's gonna probably be more questions like that. Because I definitely was thinking the same thing of, you know, if you're locking this in for twenty years, I mean, a lot can change. And I don't know that you can necessarily go to a company and say, well, if we can get a better deal, you're gonna pass those savings on to us. I mean, that's kind of a sketchy idea too. I mean, we'd have to somehow lock that in to make sure that any. Incentives or any grants or anything that would come, would definitely get passed on to us. But who was to say that that would actually take place? So.
Yeah, that would definitely be, be written into the agreement with them. That wouldn't just be relied on. Um, by like a, a handshake or a, you know, kind of a vague promise. I mean, that, that would be. Because I've, I've, that's what I've done with other municipalities that have been impacted by this in the same way. Is you, you basically, you know, you write into the agreement that. If, you know, they can secure incentive dollars that there's no, and we know exactly what those incentive dollars are gonna be, because they are published rates. I mean, there, there's no, there's no ability for, and, and we can easily do the math. You know, there's no ability for somebody to kind of do like a sleight of hand as to, oh, you know, we got X, but we really got Y. You know, the, the incentive values apply to everybody equally and, and we know what they are. So.
Uh, Adam, do you have any sense of, I mean, oil is limited in the long term, you know, things like that. I mean, any, any idea of market and how that might play out in twenty years with natural gas and oil? Any indicators that would help us understand why this is a good value versus say, maybe a market fluctuation? We're not, in more fracking happening or something in the future, you know? I know what we used burners, oil burners, and, you know, that's mainly how a lot of our facilities are equipped, but.
Yeah, um, I mean, you know, can I give you ironclad guidance? So on, you know, the, the future, you know, fifteen, twenty years out, ten even. Um, you know, that's, that's really hard to say, but what I've, what I've done with some clients too who have, who kind of want to see. Like, what does a worst case scenario look like for us? Like, what needs to happen in order for these projects to have not created financial value? Because if you think even in the first, you know, five years, right? Let's, let's say like, if, if, if we could look out with some degree of confidence over the next five years. And, and make some predictions about where the market's going. You know, five years of, of this, of, of these projects is about a million bucks. Um, so it's, you know. You, you have a lot of headroom. I think even if things went the other way. Um, you know, one of the questions I would point to you guys, it, just as, out of curiosity, maybe um Pete knows this or not. Yeah, I don't know off the top of his head, but. You know, prior to this contract that you're in now for the supply, I mean, what, you know, what kind of rates were you paying before? Um, I don't know how far you guys can look back. I mean, that might give you some indication of, you know, different market states and, and what that has meant. Um, you know, I can give you my opinion on natural gas and um certainly. certainly, you know, I have other folks at Titan who specialize in energy, energy trading, energy commodities that can, you know, give you a pretty good sense of, of, you know, what's what. But I know that there are a couple of dynamics that people, you know, at the office are closely watching. One of those being, you know, the fact that the war in Ukraine has basically reordered the entire, you know, trading if a trading methodology of natural gas in Europe and what that means for us, you know, here in the US and locally is that more gas is going overseas than it ever has been before. And that's a trend that's likely to, to, to keep going. So the, the less gas there is here, the higher the price, of course. So that's, you know, a, a market dynamic that we're watching really closely. And one of the reasons that, you know, we think that that's a trend that's not going to reverse itself quickly is because when liquid, liquefied natural gas terminals get built, what they need to do is find a buyer, you know, for coincidentally 20 years or so. They lock in long-term contracts and that's how those, those terminals get financed. So once that happens, you have 20, basically a 20-year lock on that natural gas leaving this country and going abroad. So with liquefied natural gas costing three to four times as much as dry gas that's transported through underground pipelines and things throughout North America, you see the priced, the prices start to converge on each other. So that's something that's likely to keep prices elevated. Another dynamic that we're watching pretty closely is, you know, if you think about interest rates and, and how that affects the economy broadly, it definitely impacts the kind of activity that we see in the oil and gas market. It's much more expensive to extract. When it's more expensive to extract, just because your input costs are higher, that means that, you know, the, the product as it gets to market is more expensive too. So that's something we're watching. Another thing to keep in mind too, over the decade of, you know, 2010, 2020, that entire industry was basically fueled by borrowing and spending binges. So if you look at the returns of oil and gas companies, you know, relative to like the S and P 500 or whatever, over that same term, their returns were abysmal because they weren't making any money. They were borrowing a ton and they were, you know, trying to drill as much as they could. It was great for us because the cost of the commodity itself was insanely low and it was low for an entire decade. But now that those companies have gotten kind of a taste of what it looks like to be profitable again, and interest rates are significantly higher than they were throughout the, the whole decade, you know, two or three times higher. I think you're just going to see a real big shift in how those companies operate.
Adam, do you mind if I, just to get Peter's two cents on it, you know, Peter's had the graciousness to kind of be here for the meeting. I just want to, Pete, do you have anything to add here? I don't mean to cut you off. I'm just to throw, give you the floor for a sec.
Hello, guys. I've been listening here in the background and Adam, thank you. You've actually been doing a very, very nice job trying to explain everything. I just wanted to provide some numbers because there were some questions about what the supplier contract values were prior to the current one. We actually decided to go out to bid back in March or April of 2020 when we effectively had the peak of COVID. And it was a decision that I had reached out to the town because we are coupled with the town in regards to our energy that the rates were, had effectively plummeted. And we took advantage of the fact that COVID had basically reduced these rates to the point that we were actually going down in our supplier rates, which were around seven, seven, seven cents, like 7.7 cents per kilowatt hour. Off a blend and extend contract at the time to a rate that had went down to a point of 0.0651 rate. The current rate of point 0.06690 had, had actually gone slightly from the point of 0.065 because as part of our contract with our electrical supplier, direct energy, they are allowed to charge us any sort of pass-throughs with changes in legislation or fees, which they did about eight or nine months ago, that, that the rate changed. That is the lowest rate that we have seen in somewhere. I did some research about two to three years before I was hired. I've been here for eight and a half years now and we have not seen a rate that low in more than 10 years then. So that is the lowest rate that we have seen in more than a decade. And we timed that, you know, accordingly with COVID. So I don't think we're ever going to see anything lower than what we're paying now. I'm just, I'm just being honest. Energy would have to effectively be free for us to see anything lower at this point. And the other thing is with our continued participation with demand response, load shedding events, our price on the transmission side is as low as we can make it as well. So we did the same thing with our oil contract at the time. We went out to bid during the peak of COVID. We were able to get a very low rate at that time. The difference with oil is that our vendors weren't willing to go beyond a length of a year. While we were very lucky, we took the maximum length of energy contracts for supplier for electrical that, that we could, which got us to a four-year span, basically. And so I just wanted you guys to kind of understand that, that you are literally probably sitting at the, the lowest rate that we have seen for a very long time. And Adam, the floor, floor is yours there.
Yeah.
Has this hand up?
Thank you, Ash. So I had a question about the end of life for the solar panel panels. So after the 20 years or so, when the panels become obsolete, what's like the replacement plan look like for these vendors? Are we kind of stuck with them or, or is there options to renew? What, what does that look like?
Yeah, sure. No, this is a great question. So the, the typical pathway, you know, your, your exit strategy at the end of 20 years with these deals. There's typically three options so that, and those would all be applicable here. One is, and this is the one that I always liked the most because generally speaking, at the end of 20 years, not only are you kind of facing, you know, the obsolescence of the equipment most likely, but you're probably due for a new roof as well. So at least, you know, for, for those projects, definitely, and I think you're probably in the, in the realm where you're going to replace the roof. Might be a little bit different if you have parking canopies and that structure is already there. But anyway, the, the, the path of these resistance for the school at the end of 20 years, and this would be written into the agreement, is the vendor has to take the equipment back at their cost. So that's, you know, reasonable wear and tear expected, of course, but you know, that's narrowly defined to, you know, the, the kind of reasonable wear and tear that you would already have on a 20 to 25-year roof at that point, which is again, likely to do for, to be replaced. So that's, you know, zero cost equipment taken back by the vendor. And you're likely good to go again for another 25 or 30-year roof. Option two is if there's still useful life left in the roof and there's useful life left in the equipment, you could renegotiate an extension with the vendor for an additional period. So if it was a year, three, five, whatever was left on the roof and the equipment, if you could come to, you know, mutual agreement as to, you know, what the value is on that PPA at that point, then, you know, that's another option. Option three, which I, I think is the least likely of any of these options is that you could purchase the equipment at fair market value and the fair market value being set by a third party. But again, I think given the, you know, dynamics of the roof age, the equipment age, uncertainty around what kind of programs might be in place in 20 years, I think option one is, is the one that you should bank on and, and anticipate utilizing at the end of the 20 years.
Thank you. That's helpful. I'll just add my two cents about, you know, the long-term plans. I think it's just generally very hard to tell exactly what the market's going to look like in 20 years, which is definitely something that, you know, quite frankly, it makes me want to think about it a little bit. I know we do have a timeline here to get approval, I believe by the 20th or February. Is that correct?
Well, yeah. The absolute drop dead date to get into the incentive program is March 14th. And of course, like March 14th, that'd be like showing up to your wedding, you know, as the music's playing. So, you know, I hesitate to even throw the March 14th date out there as one to try to shoot for. But, you know, the, the lowest threshold that we could get to, to be able to apply for the incentives for these projects would be like, like, like in MOU. Because we need to demonstrate site control. So vendors can't just apply for incentives without acknowledgement from the property owner, the, the school in this case, that they do have that site control to be able to apply. It's just basically a way to screen out projects that aren't quite as serious. The other thing I would just say too about the whole certainty thing is like, you know, you have risk either way. You know, and this, and this doesn't, this doesn't cover 100% of your energy expense. It's a significant hedge, but it's, it's not, it's not kind of like the, the final word on the entirety of your energy costs. So I would encourage you kind of think of it that way. It's like, it's a substantial hedge against volatility. Because I think, you know, if, when you acknowledge that you can't, you know, you, you can't accurately predict or control what's going to happen 20 years out, I think, you know, you can, you can have a pretty good handle on what the reality of things is going to be for the, you know, the next maybe four to five years. Because that generally tends to be what kind of terms that we're, we're looking at when you're thinking about your energy supply price. But I think also, you know, you gotta, you gotta consider the value too of being able to predictably manage your energy costs. You know, yes, you're saving significant money in the short term, but you also have a new tool that you just didn't have before. And, and that is being able to control a substantial amount of your costs in a way that you just couldn't before. And then of course, obviously there's, there's the sustainability benefits and all those good things that, that come with solar. But even if you take out kind of the, the intangibles, you know, you, you're introducing a significant amount of certainty into your budget that I think you guys have been, have been lucky because Pete's been really dialed into, you know, where the market's been and he's been active in terms of locking in when prices have, have plummeted. And he did it for as long as any supplier would allow, which was four years at the time. But I would just encourage you to think about the value of that too, because I mean, if you're, if you're trying to budget for energy commodities and, and the markets, you know, kind of swinging, you know, all over the place and headed up. You know, this is a really good tool to have to be able to, you know, put kind of a line in the sand and say, all right, this is, you know, we know what a certain percentage of our energy costs are going to be over time because they're, they're fixed.
Yeah, that's a good, good point, good way to look at it. Yeah, I, I just wanted to kind of figure out, you know, how how much time realistically do we have to think about it before, like you said, coming in at the last minute? I don't want to do that, but I just want to have an idea of the timeline. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Why don't you go ahead with the presentation? Because I know you said you had other slides and stuff, so that'd be great.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Dr. Willett, you want to move one forward? I think, you know, we, we basically touched on this. I mean, the, the front of the meter, the thing I'll just say about the front of the meter is, and I don't think we have to go over the results overview because we're, we're basically talking about all this now. If you just want to hop up one more slide, just or the other way. So the front of meter, just want to make a, a quick point about that. Front of the meter is a little bit of a different situation in the sense that that payment to you is fixed for, for 20 years. So there's no variance, there's no risk of loss. It's just you are effectively renting your roof. It's kind of another way to think about it. So, you know, I don't know if that helps address some of the concerns about volatility of energy markets. But again, this is just another, another way that we're putting together this portfolio to kind of help you hedge and make the most of it. So yep, you can jump, jump the, the slide that's very text heavy because we're, we're just talking about that stuff now. So yeah, I just wanted to give everybody a sense of, of the layouts. Because, you know, I anticipate that there might be some some redesigns here as a possibility and et cetera. So again, the, the idea here that I wanted to, you know, operate under was what's the maximum kind of extent of, of what we can do here based on, you know, working the incentive programs, knowing what kind of real estate you have, ages of roofs and things like that. So obviously, you know, the, the high school roof is probably got another, you know, five years left or so. So it's not a good candidate for rooftop solar at this time. In the future, when you do replace that roof, it would be a really, a really good candidate, but you know, that's just something that you can keep in your back pocket for the next couple of years. So knowing what we know about the roof, the idea was, okay, so what else can we work with? So the arrays that you see on the right-hand side, those are covered parking. So that, that would all be parking canopies, LED lighting underneath, you know, water management, decking, snow guards, all that good stuff. So that's to the right. And then the other opportunity here, which, you know, may or may not be a long shot, I'm not sure, was a ground mounted system on the south side of the building. Dr. Willett, you can hop to the next slide if you'll. So we have Birch Grove. Pretty straightforward, just a rooftop project here, nothing on the ground, no parking canopies. And the middle school roof. So this is the front of the meter option for the middle school, everything contained on the roof here. I would just note, I think there is the, some, some likelihood based on some projects that Pete has in his pipeline that might influence the layout here slightly, you know, not, not in, you know, a significantly material way, but there is the possibility of some rooftop equipment being placed in sections of the building. So that could potentially alter. But generally speaking, this, this would be the, the layout for the roof. For the behind the meter project, the middle school, we have parking canopies to the left and then possibility of a ground mount on the front yard of the school.
And just so everybody kind of has visual, this is the, this is where the sign is right now, you know, where you're coming in, that's that field. And similarly in the, in the high school side, this is where the greenhouse is. I think maybe Adam, you said that, but as people are going into the athletic field, you'd see ground mounted ones there too. Just so you, some of these are ground mounted.
Yeah. And I would just want to reiterate that, you know, there's flexibility here based on what the board wants to do. My, my thinking was just, you know, let's, let's put forth, you know, the full extent of what's possible. And then if we need to rearrange, subtract, add, et cetera, we could do that.
Just a quick question, because I know that I definitely park in that area at the middle school when there's events on the grass. I, I definitely know that. Are those on the ground? Those are not like above, right? The one where the sign is, Dr. Willett?
The one, well, the, the one here.
Yeah, because I definitely know that becomes a parking lot.
That is, well, that's all green grass now. The parking is right here at the middle school.
Yeah, I know, but for events, the grass becomes a parking.
So yes, that, that would now be bar, it would be blocked off by a gateway fence and, and, and yeah. You might have a little bit of that left down here, but, but that would be an area that's fenced off, you know, that big green is fenced off.
And then the last piece of the puzzle is uh the next slide is intermediate school. Yeah, and this is just a rooftop project only for intermediate.
Do you, Adam, you want to put up the timeline here roughly?
Yeah, yeah, sure. So, you know, look, I'll I'll be the first to admit here that like timing, timing is not like, uh, you know, it's it's a little bit more of a squeeze than normally I would like. I think if the intent is to, at at the very minimum, to to get into the incentive program. And the thing about the incentive program in Connecticut, which um is a real joy to try to navigate, is that there's a finite pool of money available, opens up every six months. Once you secure that incentive, you have three years to actually use it. So getting it locked in and locking in your project costs is always a really good thing. Um, so even if, you know, the construction didn't begin until summer twenty twenty four, or if there were other aspects of the projects that, you know, weren't rooftop related that you would want to do, um maybe in like conjunction with some paving, et cetera. You know, we, having the incentive in hand is really kind of the thing that unlocks the the full potential of the project. And because it is a competitive process to get the incentives, there are, there is the possibility that you could apply and not be selected. So my take on this, um and my advice to Pete and Dr. Willett thus far has been, you know, if we can kind of clear the minimum, the minimum hurdle to at least be able to apply into the incentive round for March of this year, if for some reason we're not selected, and and I view it frankly as part of my job to help make sure that you get selected because we're doing a lot of these projects, we know how to apply into it because basically it's like a a a reverse auction in the sense that we have to submit values that, you know, we need back for these projects in order to be able to work. And you don't want to bid too high, you don't want to bid too low. But the the moral of the story is, the more chances you get to apply, the better off you are generally, in case for whatever reason, any of your projects aren't selected. So if the idea is to try to build in twenty twenty four, um being able to take a, take a a swing um in March, you know, that just means we get, you know, three chances, you know, it's it's March, September every year. Um, and the more chances you get, the better and and more likely it is that you're going to get that incentive award. Because without the incentive award, it's really, really tough. And the and the results of, you know, the these numbers are predicated on being able to get those incentives for the 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 three projects that I that I mentioned. So the deadline for that being March fourteenth, again, it's just like March fourteenth, would that be like the eleventh hour, you know, last second? I think ideally being able to have an MOU in place um to be able to apply for the incentives by like March first, assuming that, you know, we get everything locked down that we need to. Um, the projects would enter the engineering, design and permitting phase around June of this year. And then the construction start, you know, we could work in in conjunction with Pete and and his team to make sure that, you know, the work is being done at appropriate times and not interfering with the school year or any operations um or maintenance that he has going on at the time. So that's why I put the construction start and end um to basically as TBD, because, you know, we would just try to be flexible. Given that the summer of twenty twenty four is eighteen months out, um from a construction perspective and planning perspective, time is definitely on our side, which is good. I just would always recommend more opportunities to apply into the program um as opposed to fewer, just because of the, you know, the kind of uncertain nature of it. Makes my job a lot of fun, because you can go through and do a lot of work. And you have a project that um doesn't get selected, it it can sometimes, you know, be frustrating, but we are in a good spot. I think, you know, in in MOU, um within the next, you know, five weeks, in my experiences, um, you know, pretty achievable, it's just um, you know, it would just require kind of, you know, making it you know, maybe a a level one or two priority over the next month.
Okay, um, do board members have any other questions? Because I did have a question in terms of if the high school roof needs to be replaced in five years, why wouldn't we hold off on the project at the high school?
Well, you could do both. So you could do like a phase one project now with the parking canopies and in the ground mount. And then when the roof is replaced in five years. So the thing about the NRES program, and that's non-residential renewable energy solutions, that's what that stands for. That's a a the the current incentive program. We're in year two of a five year program. Um, so if that roof gets replaced in the next, you know, five years or so, give or take, you could probably lock in an incentive um under that program for that project, but you wouldn't be per, you wouldn't be precluded from doing anything on the roof simply because you've already done a project there. We, that's pretty, you know, I'd say fairly common that, you know, we work with school districts that maybe have a re-roof plan. That's a few years out, but they want to try to do something in the meantime to, you know, maximize whatever other benefits that that they could get.
Right, and just just to clarify, um, that you don't have any on the roof here, right, Adam? It's, these are the two, this is the back of the parking lot there in the the
Yeah.
side here. So that's your your comment, uh, you're right, um, you know, it's not good that 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 wouldn't be on the roof for now, but that could be looked at in the future.
Yeah, if you want.
It would make sense to do a whole project once they have everybody on on site to just, you know, have all the solar panels, have all the like materials to just do the whole project versus piecing it in. That's, you know.
I I guess my only point to that is if you waited five or six years, I mean, you know, again, I it's, you never really know when that roof's going to be replaced. You know, eh, would you get more economies of scale perhaps waiting, you know, five years? You you might. I don't know what the equipment cost situation is going to be in five years, so that's a variable we can't really account for. And the other is just opportunity cost, you know, what have you, what have you left on the table in the meantime while you wait for the roof to be replaced? You know, if that's forty thousand dollars a year and you're five years out, you know, that's eh, you you just, you have a pretty big gap to try to make up in opportunity cost to to get that kind of, you know, value made up over time, I would think. And just, you know, would not sure, you know, when the roof would even be replaced, but um maybe that's more of a question for Pete.
Adam, do they, do they make a turf field that absorbs solar energy and makes it? No, I just, I figured, you know, maybe new tech or new technology or something.
No, but if 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 you could um invent something like that, you could probably hang up your superintendent hat, is my guess.
Okay.
Yeah, no, nothing on the.
Hey, Adam, I just wanted to uh mention too that I think the design at the high school is uh front of the meter primarily because we're already tapping loads um from the um uh from the Talon Solar Farm.
Yeah, so actually, it it.
So that's not gonna, you know, waiting on the roof is in my opinion, not really gonna probably affect a whole lot because these, in essence, are kind of separate projects. We're actually not consuming everything that we're generating here, um because we do get credits even at that location based upon the loads being tapped with the current uh virtual net uh metering, so. Just wanted to mention that from that the point of view.
No, thank you, Pete. Um, any other board members have any questions for Adam or Pete or anyone? Dana.
Um, first of all, uh, thank you, Adam, and thank you, Pete, for for all you've done for all this, for this presentation and such. Um, I really like the ideas of the canopies versus the ground mount. So when we were talking about those at the high school, we're talking either or, or is that a combination of both? I'm sorry if I missed that.
No, no, it's it's okay. So it it is, as it's designed and priced here, it's accommodation. If there's a desire to see any of, any of those um taken out of of the of the layout, you know, it would just, just let me know and um, we can redesign and reprice accordingly, but it was all basically treated as as one project together.
Okay, and I guess my my question would be, Dr. Willett, like, who gets the premier parking spots underneath the canopy? I mean, I think, I think it's, I mean, that's a joke and all, but I think it's uh an an excellent idea because I think you're utilizing it for multiple purposes versus the ground mount. Uh, and I do have similar, you know, concerns as Ashley did with the middle school with the ground mounts in that, in that grassy knoll, if you will. But overall, I think that this eh, I appreciate what, everything you've brought to the table because this is obviously the wave of the future uh and the way to go.
I think um Stafford Middle School behind the school has some of these. Would that be, people can get a picture of what that kind of looks like because in some ways, they actually keep, you know, some of the things off people's cars in the hard, you know, hard weather. So there's some benefits. People sometimes like parking under these things, but.
No, I don't just.
I think also too, Walt, there's some of these at the Buckland Mall in the back.
The back, yeah.
So it's gonna be very similar to those. Uh, Dana, just to answer your question about the parking spots there, uh, most of those spots in the back, um, probably about one quarter of the staff, but the rest are our seniors, actually. Most of their spots are in the back there.
So no Board of Ed preferred parking for events, right?
And and no, and no solar related senior pranks. We're gonna be very, very careful to make sure.
Yeah, no, I just think it's a fantastic idea. I mean, utilizing um the solar panels to benefit some opportunity for coverage of vehicles, especially in weather and and things like that. So uh, thank you both for your time. I really appreciate the presentation.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sophia? I guess my question is, is what are the next steps that the board has to take? I understand that we don't want to come in and make a decision at the eleventh hour. So what are we going to do? What's our timeline to make a decision as a board? Or or what's the plan for reviewing this? Does anyone know?
Well, the the item in front of the board right now, and as as Mr. Teff spoke about with respect to the deadline for this year and being March, um, this was your first read on this. And so at the next meeting, you know, you you could either ask more questions that time, you could kick some of it to FFC. Um, a proposed motion has been made available to you, should you decide to move forward with it at any point in the future, and and that point may not be now. But that's uh more or less where you're at, is you'd be making a decision to engage um and have me engage with the you know, accepting the Green Sky bid and executing these contract documents, et cetera. Or you could not do any of it, but but that's kind of where you're at, is we we would need the board to make a commitment. Is that uh, we're pretty much where we're at, Adam?
Yeah, I mean, I think if, from my perspective, the next major step is being poised to um enter the the incentive program. And in order to do that, to have all those applications uh prepared and and ready to submit, the site control feature is is an important part of that. That could be accomplished with an MOU, um so that's not necessarily an executed contract, like a final executed contract document. Um, I'd want to make sure that you guys have as much time as you need with that. You know, the the MOU is really kind of what we would need to have executed to get the incentives. And then while we're waiting on the incentives, which, uh, you know, and and ever source history, they usually take about six to eight weeks to even go through all the applications anyway. Um, to tell you if you're awarded or not. And then you have an additional two weeks on top of when you receive your notification award to then accept it or 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 not. So that whole process would probably put us into the April or or um May timeframe. And it's, it's really important that, you know, at that point, once ever source comes back and notifies you that, hey, your projects have been selected, that you have your contract documents can, you know, ready to go. But I see that being a process that would play itself out over a couple of months. So it's really just, you know, what's the bare minimum that we need to do to at least get our foot in the door with the incentive program? So we know that, you know, we've we've got live projects here that we're dealing with. If that makes sense. And 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 the the goal for that would be no later than March first.
All right, I'm just gonna throw it out there for board members. It's definitely something I think everyone should be thinking about. And, you know, I don't think that anyone's ready to make any um, you know, motion tonight to go forward. I think it's a lot to think about. Um, Tony, I know you have your hand up, so I'll let you.
So I'm I'm with you. I say, I just wanted to check, Griffin, do we have another FFC before the next meeting or winter?
It's February fifteenth, is that right? So we don't, but.
I, to be honest, I'd really rather not kick this back to FFC because then by the time it goes through FFC, then two weeks later, or at least a week later, it's got to get back to here. We've already discussed it in FFC. It really just needs to stay at the whole board, I think, at this point.
Well, I'd just like to make sure that Mr. Teff has a chance, uh, if we do have questions and we want to do some sort of a vote at the next meeting, that there's a chance for us to get those questions where he can prepare the answers. So I mean, maybe could we then just have Dr. Willett gather the questions together and kick them over to one where where he's got a chance to.
Yeah, I I can definitely do that. I can set up something on the dashboard to collect the questions, um, send them on over to. We'd also have to reach out to Shipman and Goodwin. If we're gonna do an MOU, we've got to get them engaged.
Definitely. Right, thank you.
Yeah, and I'm I'm fine with the Q and A is, you know, as quick, if you want to put together a list of questions, um, I I assume that there would be questions, so um I'm happy to answer those whenever they um, whenever you guys have those.
Perfect. So um, I'm just gonna leave it with the board members to, you know, just review, come up with questions. Because like, um, Griffin already said, I mean, FFC has already looked at it. We spent last meeting just about it. Now we got more crunching of the numbers. So I think it's just one of these that we just have the full board have the questions, you know, kind of just review with the information that we were given and then kind of can make a decision from there. I think that's a fair enough assessment. Um, okay, so thank you very much, Adam. Thank you very much, Pete, for coming and asking um with your information and answering questions. But I think we're going to move on to our next item, which is budget.
All right, thanks, everybody. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll see you.
Okay, um, I could do a quick lead off if you want, and then just, you know. So, um, you know, I've been going through the budget, and typically I do this between the superintendent's proposed budget and the Board of Ed budget to see if I can find anything else that pops up in the time span between the two. Um, I did find about seventy seven thousand three hundred and eighty seven dollars more we can reduce. But they, you know, they are cuts from the things that are in there. Um, they would be things like football team uniforms, the THS athletic high jump and pole vault. Um, the rope program, because we would be losing the pair of the rope program. You'd probably, that could go. Uh, that sixth grade program. Um, there is a pair that was in there uh second time, so that came out. Um, and then there's a kiln that if we had to run for a year without this kiln, could probably do it, but you know, if the, if it goes down, you know, we would just have to do something other than that pottery unit. So that's about seventy seven thousand three hundred and eighty seven dollars and seventeen cents. Um, as I was going through it, I haven't had more time at this point to do that. You know, we are obviously, um, you know, going through and answering all the questions there that we've got. I should be able to post uh quite a number additional answers tomorrow. Um, wasn't able to do that today. So that's currently where we are with respect to any additional ones that I was able to find in the time between the two. At least that I would put out there. Obviously, the Board of Ed adopted budget. It's it's what you as a board uh want to do. So that's, that's what I've got at the moment.
Um, I know the one big thing that everyone was talking about during the budget conversations with the admin. I mean, the definitely, the one spot that it seemed to be vocalized is definitely like the interventionalist. And I know that sixth grade one it was talked about a lot. Is there any hopes of having that interventionist come in? Because I mean, I do believe that the interventionalists do help out the cost from special ed and, you know, whether or not they help. Like, I just, I I feel like that is such a pivotal position that it does help in the long run costs. And so I didn't know. That was my one takeaway that was huge and a red flag.
I mean, the board can, you know, this is the point of. I mean, the board can, you know, this is the point of the, this process now is the board doing what it feels it's, is in it, you know, is, is the right thing to do. What I would say is that the reason that was put out there is that we can accomplish the co-teaching by training other teachers in, you know, in that grade and the next to be able to execute that. So from a co-teaching perspective, we can probably accomplish that. You know, without the position and right now, the class sizes at the middle school are significantly lower than the K5 level. So we do have some other options for possibly shuffling to address some intervention there. And that position would shift into a sixth grade position of a person who's retiring. So it would require some schedule revisions and some things that, you know, we would work through. It's not, not the very first thing I would want to be doing, but I also anticipate that this board, you know, is going to be looking at budgets in the three range. And, you know, that would be about $1.2 million difference from where we are to that point. And so trying to, to get to that point with things that I think we could manage, that's why I, I put that up there. I do think we can accommodate that in the low class sizes comparatively. They're not tiny, but comparatively.
You know what would help me see that?
I know, I know. And I'm working on it. One of the things I'll post.
I'm just saying, if I had my enrollment chart that I like.
Last one, last years will reflect more or less the same for, for the middle school as this one. But I, yes, understood. I'm gonna try to get that full report out.
Thank you. I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and let board members go, cause I definitely have some other stuff on here, but I'm sure everyone's going to ask questions. I mean, we could start even talking about, I mean, I, I got a few things. So board members, if you would like to put your two cents in, please raise your hand and we can have a healthy budget discussion. Cause I know everyone was there for the conversation essentially to ask the administrators and how they felt about certain situations. So would anyone like to have anything to say? Jacob?
I guess I'll go first. I gotta get it all out now, cause I won't be able to make the special meeting on first. So anyway, I know you probably know I'm gonna say Dr. Willett. I, I think I made point up in, in my questions, but I'll just make my points again. I think the, the three big areas I'd like to look at again are the insurance number. I, I know I sent you an email about seeing if there was any coordination we could do with the town. And I appreciate your answer to look into that. I think that's still a worthwhile effort. I also was looking up at the answers about a possibility, your answers to our questions about perhaps having a, a lower cost per gallon for fuel. If that's something that we could work up into the budget to save a little bit. I think that would be good. And then any sort of more cosmetic maintenance, that might be something that we can delay a year, I think is something we need to look at it as well because again, I, I really don't know if, if a budget that's 5.92% will pass a referendum. If I were to bet, I'd say no. And I, I'm, I'm very concerned that what's gonna end up happening is we're going to have to make some cuts that are going to definitely reduce the educational qualities if we can. Look at some of these, these overhead expenses. So that's just my short elevator pitch with, with that. And I, and I did have one question, Dr. Willett. For the pathways programs, I know you had mentioned in the budget that this budget sustains them. But is there any sort of monetary investment in those programs specifically that, that's new from the current budget?
No, there's really no substantial difference we're at. It's really reusing resources we have. Otherwise, you know, there's some grant funding, things like that. So we're not taking hits, heavy hits on our operating budget for things like the pathways program. And that's one of the benefits. It's really a reorganization of things where we have right now with the exception of using, you know, grants here and there to fund things. And some robotic stuff was purchased, I think with one of the title grants and, you know, helping people to coordinate. That was another thing we were able to do with some grants, but it hasn't been operating budget items. So it hasn't, it doesn't impact our budget negatively.
Okay. Thank.
Yep. And a couple of quick things if I can, just to cover some of what you were saying. I did, I'm gonna continue to reach out about the ARPA, but it's something we'd have to bring to the town subcommittee and the manager, town manager. So I'll do that. They tend to only recommend funding for one time, short, you know, short term items. Not continuing budgetary operation type stuff. So we'll do that. And in March, as we said, the, we'll have a better idea of the rates late February or March. We'd be able to look at the heating oil stuff again. And so unfortunately, that timeline, it's not, yeah, not good for, for your, your process.
Yeah. No, and I appreciate you looking into those items. You know, I, I think where I was coming with, with ARPA, and I think you had mentioned that a little bit. When we had talked about this as an FFC is we're kind of seeing the insurance. Our big part of that insurance has to do with the surge from people delaying things from COVID. And I assume that it's not going to stay at the, at elevated levels, you know, for multiple years in a row. So that's kind of where I was thinking that, but.
I, I did explore that with the town again. I was, I was given a hard no on it. But I, we can, I can, I will be persistent. And hopefully something will change. I also reached out to transportation and asked them if we could flip the 13 and the five. Possibly, you know, that next year would be a five instead of a 13 and the following year could be 13. I don't have a ton of hope for that because it's mixed up in, you know, what we would be, you know, ramping up to some of the requests that we have, some of the things we want that 30% represents getting it. But I've asked that too. Like, can we flip that at all? You know, because this is such a bad insurance here. Maybe there'd be a way to, you know, lower that and increase that the following year. But again, that's just another impact for the following year. So anyway, just based on some of the things we were talking about, I was trying those things and I'll let you know. February 1st is our next meeting on this, so hopefully I'll have some more to report.
Okay, thank you. And, and sorry, I'll, I'll be quiet in a minute here, but I just had a clarifying question. So you said, you know, we want to hear about estimates until late February. Was that just for the fuel or the fuel and the insurance?
Heating, heating oil. And as far as insurance is concerned, I, that's something that I, I'm gonna be pursuing constantly, but the experience only really gets updated, you know, monthly. So we, we won't, we will have maybe another update. But one before you guys have to make a decision and I would need that, I would need cooperation on the town side for us to make any other changes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Hey, Tony?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. And Dr. Willett, I, you know, I sincerely appreciate the efforts that, that you've been doing. And I think looking at some of the the, the savings, the, the efficiencies that you found already in that 77K that you were talking about. I, I think we're on the same, on the right track. You know, it's, I, I've got a handful of questions that came out of the, the workshop that I appreciate much to Jacob's point. You know, we spent probably more time than we were supposed to talking with Pete. Trying to understand, you know, what the, the magic behind the curtain and how he does what he's doing from an operational perspective. That, well, I most appreciated his rather frank discussions. You know, we, we asked him right up front, you know, if, if your budget was cut by X percent, what doesn't get done? You know, where do we draw that line between the cosmetic, the health and safety or the, you know, taking care of issues now that get more expensive in the next year? You know, what happens? Because much to your point, that, you know, we're looking to get down to the numbers that, that I think are comfortable and palatable to pass on. We're talking significant cuts. And, you know, based upon that instructional round, that last one, the, the thing that I know Jen and I talked a lot about after that was that that synergy that has to happen between the person and the tools for those teachers to really get what they're doing. And, and, you know, we kept asking them, what do you need to do what you do? Who do you need to do what you do? So to make the kind of numbers that we're looking at and still maintain the educational needs that, that we've, we've sworn to protect and true, I think each one of us have vested interest in making sure are there. We're gonna have to get creative. And I, I think you're looking at some of those hard questions. So that, I guess they don't really have any questions now. I'm gonna pass them forward. I, I just, you know, thank you for, for, you know, turning the crank and doing what can't be easy, but I think it's gonna be critical. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, thank you for that. I know that, you know, I had sat with Pete as well, and there were definitely some questions and you know, I do thank him for a lot of the stuff that he does because, you know, he does support our teachers of, you know, something happens in the classroom, something needs to get fixed. I mean, it's on him. So I definitely went a little bit more probably in the weeds per se about what actually happens within the school system. But, you know, I definitely would like to still thank everybody, cause, you know, I definitely had a lot of questions. And it was a lot of good conversations. I know math. Admin, she was not there and I know she still passed along her bullet point of information for the other administrators to, you know, to talk about and have their conversations. And I do, I did like hearing about how particular programs were used and now they're being used in science and, you know, the science was, it seems as though that everyone is trying to at least have the same playing field, using the same program. So whether it is a science thing or an LA that they are both using it. So I mean, there's definitely a lot of that conversation. Yeah. Any other questions from boards or comments from board members? Galloway?
Yeah, um, I really, comments as well. I wanted to build off of what both Ashley and Tony said regarding the interventionist, definitely the discussion of the night from all of our administrators, curriculum supervisors, that how important intervention was. And I think Tony and I heard that firsthand when we were doing the walk around of foundations that they really valued their interventionist. I think the most experienced teacher in the room actually asked if they could have more and more time. And, but, you know, I will, I'll leave it to your discretion based on, you know, how do you best utilize that position in the sixth grade? I guess I just, you know, wanted to just stress that, that, that's what we're hearing from everyone. We also, but I also go hand in hand, respect the need to keep the class sizes down. You know, something that TIS brought up in there was that they'd really like to get back to an 80 person team. That were, really works best in the fifth grade for that model. And Erica Yaglowski, who is the current, one of the fifth grade teachers was there and, you know, was discussing also the hardships that come into, you know, having these kinds of mismatched numbers. I know we, we tend to do different things each year. So now this year we have a team of three. She said, which was kind of, you know, difficult for scheduling, difficult, you know, for the kids in different ways. And then I know, you know, years ago, we even had one of our teachers trying to do social studies to all 150 students. So I think we tried to think of ways to manage that grade when really what we know is best for the students are those two person teams and in the transition that gives into the middle school as well with that. So I, I think we need to, you know, do both. I think we need to keep our class sizes down as well as, you know, maintaining the interventionist that we need. I think co-teaching is extremely important. It's something I personally believe in and I've seen the results in my children with it. So I, I don't want to take away from any of those positions or their ability to be in the classrooms and spend time with our students. I think it's important to us. I think it's important to our students and I think our staff has clearly told us that it's important to them.
Just as a brief thing, where we definitely cannot afford to lose interventionist is the K5 level. You know, that's, that's, and I'm not saying it's not important, 6-8. It is everywhere. And obviously I didn't put it up there without a lot of thought. But, um, but that K5 level is really, you know, right now, especially with the impacts that keep rolling through there in COVID. That's an extremely important thing. And that, I know that you were mentioning, they, they talked a lot about that, I believe. You were referencing the instructional rounds at Birch Grove where that was brought up. You know, and then, yeah, definitely.
Jaden?
Yeah, actually, Dr. Willett quite literally just said what I was about to talk about. When we did our rounds last Wednesday, one of the discussions was sort of front loading, you know, going back to Ashley, what you said about the interventionist and Jen, what you just perfectly stated. Sort of front loading that in the K through five because they sort of maintain the benefit of that throughout their school years. And sort of, it's sort of working, you know, a way to work back interventionalists back into the school without, you know, a sudden, you know, a sudden shock of X amount of dollars. But Dr. Willett, I think you just, you know, took the words right out of my mouth. Putting the emphasis sort of K through five there while also sort of establishing a plan for, you know, six through, six through 12. You know, just as important. So that's all.
You know, the, the one thing I would like to say too, I mean, I know that you put the, the rope program, taking that out. And the, and I do believe that most of the sixth graders do take that. I mean, it is a decision-making process for them. You know, I do think it helps the team building and just thinking about problems and coming up with solutions together. And, you know, I'm kind of sad to see that go as well. And you said that it was just a pair, cause I, I subbed in that class before for someone, I remember. And I mean, it really is a great program. So we would be taking that away as well for the sixth grade.
Yeah, one of the positions was one of the positions that would run the, and, and then there's 7,000 of incidentals. So that, you know, that's a position plus. And again, these are very hard choices, right? So the, the question is, you know, do you want to lose a teacher somewhere else in order to, to preserve that? Which I, I respect that, that thought process about how valuable it is. I think we can, you know, we will have to retool how we do those things. But I just don't, I want to lose as few staff as possible because the people who make the difference in the kids' lives are the staff. You know? You know? And the programs, but, but again, I want to lose as few staff as possible.
Any other board members? Dana?
Thank you, Ashley. Thanks, Dr. Willett. A couple of questions. Well, first of all, I just, a couple of statements and then questions. What I will say is, like Ashley said, I stayed in excess. I think I missed the adjournment of the meeting, staying in with some of the educators, but the resounding were, everything that I kept hearing was student achievement, student experience, class size, intervention, interventionist specialists. There wasn't a room that we went into that that wasn't brought up, including in Mr. Sabah's room in the maintenance and facilities. So, and one of the things that, that we heard was, you know, doing, making sure we had the tech teachers available, making sure the art teachers are available in the high school. And then that circles back with, with Pete and Sabah's team and himself and his team in supporting those arts with maintenance. One thing I think he said, and Jaden, correct me if I'm wrong, he said, if the kiln's broken, there's no ceramics, right? So if he doesn't have funding to work on that, then there's an art that doesn't have the opportunity in the high school. And that was just one example. But, you know, and I think the huge conversation that we just spent majority of our evening on the solar is gonna be paramount to our success, success. And that's, I think we repeated mention the 24, 25 budget with that. So it's just around the corner. So it's a great opportunity for us to put money into our, in our revolving budget. And not one-time expenditure situations and put money back into our schools. So we can not eliminate educators or interventionists or specialists and those kind of things. Some interesting fact that the TIS team brought up was 70% of incarcerated adults can't read. And they say a lot of folks who aren't up to level by the third grade level. By third grade, it's hard to catch up and it's hard to get back up to that. So you know, the K to five, specifically K to three, focusing on those and the interventionist, I mean, Ms. Silverberg for one is a rock star, right? So she gets these kids in. Ms. Silverberg for one is a rock star, right? So she gets these kids in wanting to read and thinking that, you know, their time with her uh, is fun and it's games and it's getting them, getting those wheels turning. To do something that's more difficult for some of these students. Um, the other thing that every single one of our educators kept saying is we'll get creative and doing it. We'll get creative to make it happen. And I think we have educators in the classrooms that do that every single day. Uh, but we're gonna need to do that uh, with this budget. Um, the last, the question that I actually had when you were talking about some eliminations when it come to the athletics, um, you said high jump pit. Is that correct?
Yes.
Doctor Willitt?
Yep.
On the high jump pit and you said uniforms for football, correct? Okay, so my my concerns with some of that and I'm trying to think of, you know, educational aspects, educational aspects, interventionist people and that. But then we start talking about the breakdown of the entire student and educating the entire student and educating the entire population of of our students, athletic athletes. Um, you know, the the folks that are interested in the arts, sciences, uh, literature, like all that, right? So having those opportunities to have those that equipment and those things for our students helps build our more rounded students. And when I think about the high jump pit, and I don't know how far down the road we are with that, I think safety, 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 safety. And that's what uh, Jaden was talking a lot about when we were up with um, athletics group with safety with that. Uh, my other question is a part of the football uniforms. There is, and I don't know if it's OSHA or who regulates the helmets, but there's only an X amount of your time span on that. So at a certain point, you have to, whether they're used a million times or whether they're used once, there's an expiration date, just like your fire extinguishers, just like different things. So a part of that elimination is, does that that or is it, is it the uniforms themselves? Um, again, the high jump pit, I think safety. Um, so we want to make sure that we have that.
Yeah, and I did discuss these with the athletic supervisor. And we were looking for alternative ways to manage these, but um, but that's uh, my understanding is, you know, not while not ideal, um, we could prob, we could manage.
Quick question on that. Um, the helmets, because I know like lacrosse, you have to purchase your own helmet. The high school for football, they provide helmets?
Uh, I would have to check with Tim on that. I I don't off the top of my head know if they provide, if it's the helmets too, but I think it is.
I'd I'd like to, and I could throw this on the, on the BOA Q and A. But obviously, you know, and I appreciate the creativity of of purchasing it, but there's families that maybe can't afford to purchase that. So that's, you know, uh, one of our jo, one of our jobs and our tasks is to to provide and um, for the family, the fam, the single mother, the family for that's always been brought up, right? Who doesn't have the ability to afford some of those different things. And we have the, we have the responsibility on our shoulders to provide some of those things. And I know we looked at the whole list of 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 items and task and we think about spokes and hands and and, you know, we talk about, you know, all the different things we saw in the structural rounds and and the teaching tools, because the interventionists, they can't be covering teachers' classrooms. They have to be doing intervention and they have to be available to be doing intervention versus covering the holes that we have of not teachers in class. We have to provide the whole student with art supplies, with um, athletic supplies and different things. And it's not, can we find a way to fund it with pay to play and addition ad or do different things? We need to find a way to support our entire student. And that starts with, you know, our facilities and our group that maintains our facilities. And then that goes to our educators that are going to ensure that we have those folks that are in front of our students. And listen, Dr. Will, I don't, I don't, I don't envy your position. I don't envy any situation. I don't want to have any opportunities of losing any, and our wonderful educators that we have in our school system on all levels of the spectrum. So I just, I'd like to take a deeper look into the athletic situation with the safety aspect. Um, but I'll throw that on the dashboard or the budget Q and A. I don't wanna. But um, again, I wanted to thank thank everybody for the for the rounds. I think it was fantastic.
And and just as, just a quick thing, we are um, struggling, as you know, uh, right now with a variety of things that cause a lot of absences and uh, we do have staff covering, you know, we have to shuffle staff around. So, you know, intervention, other places like that, if we were to lose those staff, um, you lose, you lose some of the certified teacher people that we would be shuffling around. You know, um, and as it is, we are, we are, we are really challenged right now by staff shortages due to a variety of reasons.
Um, let's go to Griffin.
I just had more of a comment than a question. It seems like this whole discussion today seems to be more centered around either adding stuff back or adding stuff in. And I don't want to be the pessimist, but I think we are all putting our heads in the sand if we think that a five point nine two percent budget is going to make it all the way through. I think we need to make some hard decisions now. And while I don't want to see anything cut, I just don't see how this budget goes through. And I think we're just putting, pushing off having to make those harder decisions. And like I said, I mean, we haven't even talked about taking anything out of this budget. The seventy seven thousand dollars of Dr. Willitt just even brought up to us is barely a drop in the bucket. And we're already talking about putting that back. So I just think we really need to be realistic over the next several weeks about this budget. And I just don't know how we are going to pay for that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Jaden?
Yeah, no, I, and I completely understand sort of where Christine's coming from, but I would sort of respectfully disagree. This is, you know, more than a at the end of the day, we still have to look at, you know, what needs to be added as well as what needs to be sort of cut as well. And so I feel like this is sort of just the beginning process of it. That's sort of how I'm understanding this right now. Um, in in sort of the year two of this sort of process is sort of getting it out there, what, you know, again, what we just talked about with administrators last week. Um, sort of what is needed. Again, the lifespans of the helmets, if you go, if you get past that, students get hurt. And so these things need to be mentioned. Um, everything needs to be discussed. Um, and I encourage us to keep discussing this. And then, yeah, of course, you know, we're going to get into discussions of, okay, well, this kind of has to go in order for this to come in. And so, um, I think this is just in, again, in my interpretation, this seems to be the sort of the beginning conversation of of all that.
Okay, uh, Tony?
Yeah, just wanted to kind of chime in. I mean, I I I listen and I absolutely appreciate and agree with what Ms. Griffin was saying there. I think you know, it was a couple of budgets ago when somebody, when we were doing still open meetings. So before COVID, when, you know, one of the residents stood up there and passionately told us that it was our responsibility to provide for the educational uh, opportunities for all students. And you know, we took that to heart. We really did. Uh, but the thing that stuck in my mind was that does not necessarily mean adding everything, uh, does not necessarily mean not having the conversations about, you know, what a respectable number is that we push forward. I think it's our responsibility to provide for that child's education, which does mean making sure that the financial burden is reasonable. Um, before it gets to the town. Uh, we we don't, if we push a number to the town and it gets kicked back, then we've lost our opportunity to do the creative thinking that that, I think it was Jen and Dr. Willitt we're talking about there. To look and say, if we, you know, to to determine where we want to make these opportunities. Uh, yes, the seventy seven K Dr. Willitt's found is appreciated. Uh, but I think it's up to each and every one of us to dig through there and provide ideas of where we could pull this. So Dr. Willitt and his staff can then look at the effects. Uh, ultimately, when we give it to the town, it is the Board of Education's budget. It is no longer the superintendent's budget. It's what we are giving to the town. So, uh, I I think, I know based on what I've got written down, I haven't sent enough in Dr. Willitt, and that's my apologies. I'll sincerely put some, that's my ideas for you and your staff to think about. Um, the other thing that I want to kind of make sure everybody is aware of is this budget is not a one-year conversation. Uh, you know, we we talked about some opportunities, Dr. Willitt, to make the cost this year less, knowing that the next budget, you know, will have to pay the five percent, the thirteen percent. Keep in mind the the grant situation that's going to happen in next year's budget that we're talking about. It's not going to get easier. If if we kick that can down the road, then next year, we're going to have the same conversation where it's going to be worse. We need to do whatever we can right now to minimize the staff effects and maximize, you know, the opportunities that we have while keeping that number reasonable where we can continue to get what we do. Thank you.
Hey, Jen?
Um, I guess I agree with with what everybody's saying, you know, that the number's rough and, you know, we're all, we're all looking at it the same way. And how are we going to get something like that to pass? Um, you know, I I asked the question, I'm not going to put you on the spot now, Dr. Will, because I know it takes some research, but you know, what are surrounding districts, you know, doing? I, you know, I've been looking and trying to find some things. I see Ellington's asking for a five point three eight increase. Um, I was told Stafford's asking for over an eight percent increase. Um, so I think you know, we're all in the same boat here. Costs are going up. And, you know, we've, we've taken so much away. We're getting to a point where it's getting really tricky to take some things away. Um, so, yeah, I think, you know, we have dual roles, right? And what we need to do here. And we need to, we need to think about the cost and and what this will do to the town and the community. We also need to do what's what's best for our schools. That's, in my opinion, that's that's the first thing. What do our students need? What is our staff telling us they need? I think we've been for years trying to do a less is more. And I think we're getting to a point where more is just more, guys. Like, we need more.
Yeah, I mean, I I love talking about things like South Windsor's eight percent request by the superintendent. Or Windsor's uh, such request. But I would say, you know, right now from my eyeball view uh, that I had time to look at, and I will be publishing these for the board's uh, Q and A. You've got about three districts between a two and a two nine, three districts from a three to a three nine, nine districts from a four to about a five, one district from a five to a five nine nine, uh, us. Um, two districts, six to six nine nine, one district, seven to seven nine nine, and at least two districts in the eight plus. Uh, from from the group that I could see before I came to the meeting tonight. So that's kind of where that is at the moment. Um, but I'll put that together in a, in a more easily, you know, viewed kind of thing. But at least I think that that addresses one of the questions, right? For the moment.
And and I do think our staff are thinking about ways to be creative because just like taking away the pre-K, I had a excellent conversation with Mr. Poland. I mean, he, you know, I wish I could remember what exactly I had a phrase that he had said that was really on there and I didn't write it, but essentially that pre-K program will now be somehow offered through FRC, which then the students would be able to do a um, internship versus taking a course and learning more about what the children's, you know, psychology and things of that nature. So, I mean, they are thinking of how to be proactive and how to try to keep the programs afloat by doing creative methods. Um, I still feel bad for those students that won't get a credit for those. But I mean, that Mr. Poland was definitely looking. I mean, he has some ideas for art pathways that may not it costs a lot to turn into like an art one or a science. Well, I mean, he definitely had some ideas. I mean, my time with Mr. Poland, I think it was excellent. Um, you know, he definitely is coming up with the creative ways. But, you know, I feel bad because Mr. Adam from tech was there now two years in a row. And you know what? I'm the only one who visited the man. Two years, one time on the video screen and one time in person. So, you know, make sure we talk to everybody.
Next year, we'll just have a chat bot there.
Last year was just a scream that he was
With the answers.
And he felt bad that he came, that no one, and he's like, you came last year. I'm like, well, I guess I'm the only one talking about laptops and how we can try to solve to save some money. So, you know, once again, I think it was a great conversation with him. I'm glad that he came. But I mean, it was great information. But there's a lot for us to digest and try to figure out some more creative ways, but you can only get so creative sometimes. And, you know, it hurts when you have everyone talking about interventionalists and you see that on there when that ultimately could help you know, with special ed costs in the long run. So it's definitely things to think about and to review. But if no one else has anything else at this point.
I can, I just did look into something so I can answer one more question now, but but most of it will happen in the Q and As, you know, you know, even for time's sake, but the football uniforms are just the cloth. They purchased helmets last year. He was able to pre-purchase some of the stuff and, you know, and so on, uh, in one of, in one of the iterations we had. So that this is just the clothing, not the helmets. And we can rotate them.
Thank you for the clarity on that, Dr. Will. I didn't mean to just jump in, but it's so important to make sure we have safety at mind. So thank you for clarifying.
The other thing is, as the board gets closer, you know, in timeline, one of the things you could ask me to do is you could give me a fi, a figure or a percent and ask me to come up with a few proposals to match that percent. You know, and I'm only thinking for strategies for you because you know, unfortunately, the nature of the process is you have, you know, this period of time between my recommendation and what you adopt. Um, if you wanted to, you could say, you know, we, you could instruct me to go to a certain percent and come up with scenarios and then you could decide. You know, scenario. Anyway, I throw that out there for consideration because there's a lot to be done between now and then type of thing.
Okay, Jacob?
Yeah, no, um, just on that last point, Dr. Willitt. I think that might be something that would be useful. To see a couple of different, or at least to to get to a couple of scenarios. So we can have a, you know, what does a four and a half look like? What is a four? What does a three and a half look like? Because I I have to agree with what Christine said earlier. You know, at the end of the day, almost six percent is not going to pass a referendum. We've got to start looking at what that impact of that is. And even if we do decide to keep some things in the budget and go with a higher request. We need background information, you know, to come to the town explaining why we did that and can show them the effect of of what what the price was. So I I think we really do need to start looking at it that way. In addition to, you know, some of the other things we discussed earlier, like insurance, like the the fuel, the maintenance, um, the the seventy seven K that you have looked at. Um, I I think those, those are all important bases for discussions um, over the next couple of meetings. We just need some of that to continue this discussion through the youth.
Okay, I mean, at this time, if there's no other questions or comments, um, let's move on to the nurse's contract.
Okay. Actually, let me go right to, oops. All right, gonna give you a summary this in the board packet, also in in the, um, you know, for the for Board of Ed review is the actual contract itself, but that's not published until after the meeting because it's still part of the you know, part of the process. So a summary here, talent ranked, and you can read this, I'll just summarize pretty quickly. Um, six for a base minimum and eleventh for max level out of fifteen districts um, in Talon County. So this uh, this contract is is a good value for talent and it's competitive with respect to nurses. It does help us maintain our workforce. Uh, nurses generally on the low end have been a little low in in talent. So the four, four and four percent um, help get the nurses up to a place in the, you know, in the next year or two that would allow us to maintain our workforce, not lose people. And so employer share for insurance, sixteen point five for dental, seventeen extended school year nurse compensation. That's usually summer work two twenty to, so we don't lose people and we're able to have a nurse. We have to have one for the program. Um, sub nurse, we we can't really get sub nurses. So that's a going rate these days and that makes sense. Part-time nurses being eligible for pro-rate insurance, we don't expect that to incur a major cost for the district. Uh, nurses may accumulate up to five days. That was what they wanted. Um, and nurse coordinator stipend goes up a little bit. Right now, you're looking at about sixteen thousand in the first year, seventeen thousand, second year, seventeen thousand, and third year for what this costs the district total. Um, and that's a summary, quick review of it.
Okay, um, at this point, uh, Jen, did you want to add anything to this?
I do. Thanks. Um, so I do. Thanks. Um, so. You know, as with all the contract negotiations that we've done this year, this is our first time negotiating since the pandemic. So, you know, our our school nurses, their roles and responsibilities really grew dramatically during this time. Uh, while everyone was doing everything they could to social distance. Um, especially in schools and stay away from, you know. Even presumably healthy students and staff. Like all healthcare workers, our nurses were our frontline workers, so they were. Up close and personal all day, every day with presumably ill and contagious students and staff. Um, you know, the responsibility to make the judgments based on symptoms, judgments that. Would protect our students and staff and their respective families when they went home, it it fell on their shoulders. They really did a phenomenal job during this time communicating constantly with um, concerned and very stressed parents with um. You know, with assisting in contact tracing, with communication with E H H D, et cetera, et cetera, all while performing all of their regular duties. So our nurses, you know, I think we need to. To think about the job that our nurses do. They. They care for our most vulnerable students every day. They see children with asthma, they see children with diabetes, they administer medications, they. And care plans, they conduct screenings, they write health referrals. They're often the first stop for many students with mental health issues. Um, many of us are parents here, and we know that even though we've returned to somewhat normal. Illnesses are still very overwhelming in the schools. We're still dealing with COVID, we're dealing with the flu, we're dealing with virus after virus. So, we spent a lot of time negotiating this contract. It was one of our longer meetings. The monetary increase that we're presenting is extremely fair, as Dr. Will explained. Our pay for our most experienced nurses ranked eleven in our um, D R G and sixth for the newer nurses. Retention is crucial right now in this field. On the day of negotiations, we looked at job openings in our surrounding areas, and there were plenty. Uh, and I actually, I just read an article. I was looking at some things today. There was an article that just came out on the third that Massachusetts has three hundred open school nurse positions that they can't fill. That is over ten percent of all the school nurses in the state. The National Association of School Nurses reports that inadequate salary misconception of the school nurse's role. And burnout contribute to why school nurses are leaving the profession. So the importance of providing a fair and equitable wage is clear. And I really think that the four percent that we've negotiated does that.
Jayden, I would, Jacob?
I'm muted too. Um. So you mentioned retention, just curious, uh, has there been a lot of turnover with our nurses? I I'm genuinely curious about that.
Uh, no, there there hasn't. I think that has to do with um. The the really good working relationship that we have um, during COVID, you know, we were real partners in that process. Um, however, um. You know, during COVID, there was a little turnover in that. Some of the people that, you know, we brought in to directly manage um, some of the case stuff that was coming up. You know, decided they didn't want to be a part of that. Um, so during COVID, I would say one or two turned over. Um, what we're dealing with right now is we have people that know what they're doing. And um, if we don't remain competitive, we'll we'll get people who are really green, and that has a very big impact on operations. So um, that's, that's really what what this accomplishes is making sure we can retain our experienced people because we train them and it costs money. To, you know, have training and all that, so.
Yeah. A- and second, I have a second question. It's good to know, though, we're not. Really struggling with that, which is, which is good. Um, but I agree, it's important to retain good staff. I know we have had several nurses that. Or have been in the district for a long time, which is great. My second question was is for uh, the different items under the financial summary underneath the salary. Uh, changes, are any of these different from the previous contract?
When you say different, would do, um, some of them, yeah, you know, they, they're. You know, they're a little bit, but um, the four percent is is a little higher. Um, but it also is the market right now, and it also speaks to the, to the eleven. Um, people that we need to, you know, being eleventh for that maximum is 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 a tough thing right now, so. Um, but we are keeping some things the same, and this unit does not compensation wise make. As much as most of the other units. Um, they're they're fairly modest in their overall compensation.
And it's a small bargaining unit as well.
Right, so that's why it's important, you know, um.
Yeah, my question was more for like the employee share, medical insurance and dental, like uh, those percentages changed from the previous contract.
Uh, let me go back and check, but they're, they're, I think, a little higher, although I think medical stayed the same.
Okay.
Dental, I think, is a lot slightly up.
Okay, no, no.
Say dental, I think, went a little bit up, but the medical, I think, was stayed same.
Yeah, medical did stay the same because they they don't make a lot of comparatively. Um, their compensation level is fairly modest, and so that medical insurance really bites into it even more.
And I think we only went up, what was it, maybe ten dollars for the per diem day?
Yeah, and that's just to.
It wasn't anything, it was just made us equal with everyone else like around.
Right.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious if there are any other major changes besides the salary.
No, because even the stipend stayed the same of what was going to be there.
Yeah, the nurse stipend, the coordinators up a little, a couple hundred.
It was the same as what it was. Prior.
It, well, it it from a, it it increases, as you can see, over the span of those years, it edges up a little bit. So it is, it the nurse coordinator.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions or comments? New? Okay, so why don't we? Go to, yeah, I'll entertain the motion to move it to. Ah, to 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 do, make it a motion for L one.
Uh, Jacob, Mari, I moved to accept the, I I moved to move item I three to L one.
Okay.
I will second that.
Okay, um, any comments or concerns? If not, we will do a roll call vote about just moving it from. I three to L one under board action to actually take a vote on the contract itself. So Jacob?
Hi.
Gallo champ?
Hi.
Tony?
Hi.
Jayden?
Hi.
Griffin?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
Sophia?
Hi.
Ford?
Hi.
Uh, I as well, therefore we'll move it to uh, board action as under L one. Okay, at this time, if you have a committee or liaison report, if you could, please raise your hand. I'm not just calling you if you have something to add. But I don't believe there is. Okay. Um, there's no chairperson report. Let's go ahead and move to the uh, board action for the nurses contracts. So I'll entertain that motion.
She come up.
I.
I moved to accept the bargaining unit agreement for the Talon nurses to take it back July first, twenty twenty three, extend through June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
Sophia Shake second.
Okay, any further comments from board members at this time before we vote on the actual contract? Seeing none, we will do the roll call vote. So Jacob?
Hi.
Gallo champ?
Hi.
Tony?
Hi.
Jayden?
Hi.
Griffin?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
Sophia?
Hi.
And Plord?
Hi.
I'm a I as well, therefore this passes unanimously. Okay. At this time, let's move on to public participation. So Dr. Will, if you could take them, put your two minute timer up. Um, comments just need to be limited to the items on the agenda. If you could, please list your name and your address for the record, and if you could, just raise your hand. I will call on you, and then you will have two minutes. So at this time, if any public would like to speak, please raise your hand. Okay. Seeing there's no comments at this time, um, I will. We're gonna enter into executive session, so we just need a vote to enter into executive session if someone would like to make that motion.
Question, I can make the motion, but are we inviting anyone in?
Nope.
Okay.
No, Dr. Willett, sorry.
No attorney, no attorneys or anything, but just Dr. Willett. Yeah. Um, Jacob, Mari, I move it to enter executive session to discuss an attorney client privilege relating to ethics complaint. T E C dash twenty twenty two dash one, inviting Superintendent Dr. Willett into executive session.
Sophia Shake, I second.
Okay, any discussion per to a vote? If not, then I will do the roll call vote, starting with Jacob.
Hi.
Jayden?
Hi.
Gallo champ?
Hi.
Tony?
Nate.
Sophia?
Hi.
Griffin?
Hi.
Plord?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
I'm a I as well, therefore with majority, we will be entering into the executive session. Perfect. So Lisa, if you have that then, and we're recording, just note that we did exit um, executive session at nine thirty six. And at this point, I will entertain this motion. Um, Dr. Will, can you make that bigger? I don't know. Very small.
Yep. Is that better?
Yep, well, now you gotta, there you go.
Sorry, there's a delay.
Hmm, okay. So at this point, I will entertain the motion that uh, Dr. Will had written on the little word doc.
Uh, Jacob, Mari, I move to waive attorney client privilege between the Talon B O E and shipment and good one as it pertains to T E C. Twenty twenty two dash one complaint.
Been registered, I'll second it.
Okay, if there's any comments or questions, um, right now, you can have the time to do so. Uh, seeing none, I will move to the roll call vote. So Jacob?
Hi.
Jayden?
Hi.
Gallo champ?
Hi.
Tony?
Hi.
Griffin?
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, Plord?
Hi.
Sophia?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
And I'm I as well, therefore with majority, um. We will, what? Uh, shipment and good one, we have the privilege in regards to the T E C complaint. Okay, at this point, um, we can enter into points of information. So if any board members have anything that they would like to say. Please raise your hand. Tony?
Yeah, I just wanted to check one thing during the budget discussion, uh, Jacob brought up a good point about uh. Dr. Will preparing some uh, scenarios. And since we've only got, I guess, one more session left before then, is that something that we are asking him to do?
I think it's a great idea. Then that way we can see, um, I think he did that last year as well. Um, I think that that was a good way of reviewing what's, at what level that we can go through.
I agree.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions or comments?
I got a quick one. Um, sorry to raise my hand, Ashley. Um, but. Is it possible, Dr. Willett, uh, that maybe either the special um, budget meeting or the final budget meeting, we might be able to have our business manager. Um, present. I I haven't gotten a chance to meet him. I think it'd be kind of nice to uh, have him um, here as a resource during our budget discussions.
Yep, yep, and he'll be attending the F F Cs, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and I thought someone else had raised her hand because a box moved and I don't know. Jayden?
Yeah, I just wanted to sort of end the meeting off, um, acknowledging Talon, a former Talon student. Passed away recently. Um, and I just think it's, it's, you know, sort of important that the board is there for their family. Um, um, they've lost a couple of members of that family within the last year and um. And so I just, you know, I won't publicize the name or anything. I just want to, you know, wish the family well. Um, and just offer my support in any way that I can be of any support. Um. And um, if any board members were not aware, then um, hopefully, you know, this sort of helps you out, so. Um, my most sincere condolences to the family and um. And um, that's sort of all I got.
Well, thank you for that, um, the reminder. I did see something, but you know, just. How things go, I completely slipped off my radar. Um, if the. Family would be okay, I mean, I would, I would have done that, um. Moment of silence because it is important passing over our prior student. Um, I do send the condolences to a family. You know, given just my recent loss, it is very difficult to navigate everything. And, you know, having a child, it is even harder. It doesn't matter what age they are, so I would like to um, send my condolences as well. Thank you for that, Jayden. Anyone else? No, at this time, um, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Jake Amari, I move to adjourn the January twenty fifth meeting at nine forty one P M.
No one's seconding it. He's Louise. Okay, uh, roll call vote, Jacob?
Hi.
Jayden?
Hi.
Gallo champ?
Hi.
Tony?
Hi.
Griffin?
Hi.
Plord?
Hi.
Sophia?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
I'm a I as well, therefore we will end uh, on nine forty two. Have a great night, everyone.